We will conclude the quarter before 6:55. Lisa?
I wanted to know if you guys thought anymore about the fund balances. Now, we have decided that we will transfer money back to the open space, back to the general fund from the open space. And then you guys said that you would think about transferring money then back to the open space fund out of the fund balance. So I had, you know, my name was for the fund balance. Number one, now that we are doing loans from the general fund to the sewer fund, next year we're gonna have to do a loan, an additional loan to the sewer fund from the general fund to install the extension, the grid extension to five point extension.
Would be delayed until next year?
IRS feels it'll all be done, the rest of it'll be done next year. They feel they'll have DEP approval and God forbid and construction and everything next year. That's one of the things I thought, you know, because that's going to cost $550,000 next year to do those two things. The other thing is the maintenance garage. That's another category I thought for the fund balances because, you know, Roger has a list of what will need to be done in the future such as a new roof, a new floor inside the maintenance garage, different repairs to that.
Why would that be any different than having a fund set up to maintain this building?
It's not. I'm just going over what categories I came up with for you guys.
Underneath, a general maintenance or a contingency fund or something of that sort?
Yeah, we break it down separately on this kind of subject.
Yeah, I have it listed as maintenance garage and then I was just naming some of the things that might need to be done. Another, Roger and I went through all the equipment. He has the equipment list which I have to type up and give to you guys. The year of everything we have, when it'll need to be replaced. So he goes out 10, 15 years.
What does he base that on? IRS standards for amortization and depreciation or what?
He bases that on, he, in his co-op, he's talked to other townships about the, how long this equipment will last. He's talked to the, like, people at the management to see what work will need to be done at what point and then how much they're worth 10 years from now. So he's done a lot of research on the trunks and equipment. So I thought that could be another category of what you guys, you know, were budget for 10 years down the road.
Is it all be, again, so I'm clear, this is all under one umbrella?
Yes.
Which would be a third fund, open space, sewer, and now?
Maintenance garage. And then?
No, let's go back though. We didn't like the maintenance garage. I can't just do maintenance for our real estate.
That could be, but this, but the equipment will be separate from maintenance for real estate.
Yeah.
If you had, what I'm suggesting, if you had maintenance, then you could itemize underneath that more specifically what you want. So this building would be different from?
Correct.
From the garage, from the equipment and, you know, computers.
Yeah, I have that on here.
They have finite life. There's a lot of things that would fit that.
Yeah. And then ways length is another category?
What would we have to do on ways length at this point?
Nothing at this point, but on the 16th, I think it's the?
16th.
16th, you're gonna meet with the Route 1 Quarter, we're gonna talk about ways length. That was one of the items that, when we first discussed the fund balance, we talked about possibly doing something with ways length. Now, I don't know if you want any money set aside for that or not. I think that's, that's something I think a developer should really do it.
That's a totally different thing from the maintenance. That has to do with?
Yeah, that's another category.
Okay. Yeah, that's fine.
And then another category is MS4 because that's gonna be a big project during the next few years and costs a lot of money. I'm trying to get a quote from Bob Johnson, just what we'll have to spend next year on MS4.
For the benefit of everybody here, the MS4 is the sewer, no sewer, the rain runoff and whatnot.
And then we talked about having a category for bridge repairs in case a bridge washes out. And then roads. Roger has the roads listed, you know, he could go out 20 years as to what roads need to be replaced and repaved and rebuilt.
Can I suggest that you pass all this by Tim Ombright as well?
We already discussed it.
You and Tim.
Mm-hmm.
I'm particularly concerned about the time.
That we haven't discussed yet. I just wanted to know if this, the concept of this was okay with you guys?
Yeah.
And then I was gonna talk to Tim about the time because I wanted to show him Roger's list on the equipment so we can see what he thinks, you know, how far out we should really?
Are we getting too far down in the minutia of all this? I mean, originally we just thought we'd just put money in capital budget, which these things might happen, kind of those things like?
Yeah. I don't think we should get too detailed as far as saying, well, this amounts for computers, this makes this.
No, you can't do that. You gotta win.
Yeah, I think, but I think we should say, well, this amounts for the building's upkeep and this amounts for the equipment. That's just my thought on that.
I wanna test Bob's concern. It's why we're blessed at this point that we have $7 million, $9 million, some million dollars sitting in a common pot.
And we're gonna have an extra one.
So if something happened today, but let's assume we didn't have that blessing, wouldn't it behoove us, wouldn't it be good planning to set aside every year a certain amount so that at the time that the life expectancy of our roofing shingles ran out, that we had a fund set aside to take care of the roofing shingles or whatever else would be, we have a finite life that would need to be tested? In other words, you're putting aside money specifically for that purpose as opposed to just going in and funding it as you go. A different example. Before my time, the township bought a pickup truck and a stainless steel bed.
Two of them.
Two of them? Okay, two of them. That was paid out of pocket change.
Right.
That came out of the common pot.
Right.
Whereas I'm suggesting there should have been a fund of money set aside every year so that when the pickup trucks that you were using breathed their last eed through their valves, you had the money set aside to take care of it and you wouldn't be taking it from the general operating fund. Because these are long-term investments. These are capital investments. They're not, they're not general operating expenses. So that they, turn to the accountants that are here, but I think that they should be managed in a different way.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much what I was saying with the separate categories. And that's why I had Roger give me the list on all the equipment and so we could try to figure out when it would have to be replaced and?
But I'm hearing Bob say he's not comfortable with that idea. He likes to have a deep pocket and not worry about?
Well, I don't think it needs to be totally deep.
I think he's just saying not as detailed.
Not as detailed, yeah. I mean, having like this guy for replacing trucks, but not saying in 19, at 20,000, 20, we're gonna replace the two-ton dump truck or something like that. I don't think we have to be that detailed.
Right.
And we don't really know what the numbers are gonna be in two, five, 10 years for some of these things.
That's right.
Right, that's why we have to?
Yeah, I agree with you.
Just estimate.
I just had a thought on this though, that perhaps a lot of this work might be put out for bid. And if we have an amount set on our books that would be open to the public, reserved for a job where replacing the roof shingles, we're sort of broadcasting how much money we have to spend on the item by the reserve. Although I know we can adjust it and so on, but what we're sort of saying to the public, how much we think we have or want to spend or can spend against this specific item, if it's very detailed, extremely detailed to that degree. It's only a thought that, you know, if there's some merging of general maintenance or other con, even capital items, one truck versus several trucks or other equipment, that the money is still available with a discussion as to how it got that value. But it wouldn't be necessarily putting it out to the public, what's the amount the township expects to spend for a specific thing that let's spend this bid. It, I don't, it can create a controversy as well as maybe putting this at a bidding disadvantage. It's just an idea. I mean, you're having excellent discussion on this point.
Yeah.
Thank you.
There's a category that I think used to be used and it was called capital expenditures. Okay? And it was money that put away every year. And the thing is, when we look at it each year, you can always adjust the amount of money you're putting away to cover unexpected increases or decreases in the value or a cost to us of some of these expenditures.
Right.
Capital expenditures could include maintenance equipment like the dump trucks and mowers and all that type of thing. Capital expenditures should also include, could include computer systems as a general category rather than get real nitty with some of these big expenditures. You'll spend $10,000, $15,000 of computers.
Right.
$150,000 on some of these more sophisticated pieces of equipment. But the thing is, you can adjust it every year.
Yes, we can.
Joe?
Yeah, I just, Jared Duffey, I just had a comment that sinking funds is essentially what you're talking about. They've been around business and government for a long time and I think they're a good, they have, serve a good purpose. Which, you know, the wheel's already been invented.
Sounds like you guys both agree, just, you know, with the, just on what depth you're doing at.
I think we agree on the concept.
Right.
There's a value in, in building some sort of security for the future.
Right. Okay, well, I'll work on that.
Lisa? Were you still on fund balances?
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, is the township boarder any closer to finalizing the starting and ending balances for the various funds?
Yeah. We're waiting for him to issue the final. He's reviewed it with the supervisors. We're waiting for him to issue the final form. You know, he gave everybody a draft, so. Once he gives us the final, he's gonna give us a PDF, put it on the website and he's gonna be here at the October meeting.
And are all of the funds being looked at by him for fund balance, fund starting and ending?
Well, he, the two main that he looked at were the sewer and open space.
So, but aren't we going to do the library and the fuels packs and those two as far as developing starting and ending?
Library's gonna pass through.
Could be zero.
Could be zero.
Yeah, we didn't ask him to do special for that.
Okay.
The rea, that's why I mentioned the, mentioned transfer money into the general fund from the open space because to make the books clear, that's what we're gonna have to do and then the supervisors can reallocate money to the open space. And then as far as the sewer, we found that we, the sewer fund is gonna owe the general fund, so we have to give a loan to the sewer fund and so the sewer fund can pay it back.
A little bit confused. The concept, I agree. We ought to, we ought to finalize, as we talked about the other day. I think we need to finalize what, the nature of the relationship that's happened over a period of time with these funds so that we have a line in the sand from which we can now go forward. And as, again, as we have talked about, doing a loan from the general fund back and forth to balance them out as to that line, I think is totally appropriate. But I'm, I'm not sure how that comports with, I don't want to be redoing the accounting back.
Right.
Something, what happened in 2004 and what our finances showed in 2004, I think is written in stone.
Right.
I don't think we can restructure.
In saying we would have to do it?
We're not gonna change anything back.
Tim told me we would have to do it after you guys made the motion in October, we would have to do it then. And it would be in October this year. And then if you guys said to me, said that's the other thing, if you guys decided at the October meeting, you want to allocate $2 million of the general fund money to the open space fund, then we would transfer that in October as well. But I was hoping, hoping you guys would come up with a number that, you know, when at some point for the open space fund, so they know?
To transfer?
Yeah. At some point, because I know all three of you felt that you would just leave that money in the open space fund at first, but then everybody agreed to transfer it back and then you would transfer money, allocate money back.
What did you say, do we just say nothing back, you know?
Yeah.
That was the point, yeah, yeah.
But Tim's just saying that if you guys wanna do that at the October meeting, I will just have to have a motion that you agree to that.
Right. Okay, so we probably ought to, we ought to try to get our heads wrapped around that number before then.
Yeah.
Somehow, sometime, somehow.
Well, we can talk about it at the October meeting.
Okay, that's a good idea.
I'm gonna send you guys a draft of the budget tomorrow so you guys can start looking at it. Now, the budget I put, 2013 budget, 2012, 2011 and projected for 2012. So you guys have to let?
2011 expenditures, right, not budget.
Now, well, that's what I wanna ask you guys, the budget, I also, I can change it to, that's what, I wanna know what you guys want, who prefer to save. Would you prefer to save the budget for the past couple of years or the actuals?
I think actual or 11.
I have projected for 12 or more.
So that would be to date, actual.
Right.
And that'll also be a budget 2012.
Right, but I, 2012 was not actual to date. I put what I think we'll spend by the end of the year.
Yeah, so you used to do projected, right?
Yeah.
So you're projected, so you're not gonna have year to date, you'll have projected.
Yeah, but I can have year to date as well.
That's, that'd work a lot, except it must be over on something.
Right.
And that's because we don't allocate per month.
Right.
We do it at once, whenever it is.
Exactly.
So that it really wouldn't help to do a year to date.
Yeah.
So the, so the projected, I guess, is as close as we can get to it.
And have the 2012 budget and the 2011 project. And I want you guys to go back if, you know, if you see if anything's different or changed. Some of it, you know, I've changed some of the categories around the fallings, some of the categories, so it was sort of hard matching some of it up because of, you know, some of the.
Oh, yeah.
I wanted to talk about the case easement.
You were making that, you were still looking at that case. Last I heard, P-12 and LCAC was gonna talk to cases.
And they did?
I talked to them a couple of times and made some suggestions and they, when I talked to them last time was on a late Sunday afternoon. I think maybe they were distracted by a football game or something, but anyway, the sun was pretty adamant that they didn't want to do an easement. Now we've had input to the contrary. Have you had a chance, P-12, to talk to them?
Yeah, we had a site walk, the LCAC, we conducted a site walk, what, two weeks ago?
Yes.
And, and right now they are interested in putting an easement on the, I believe it was referenced as lot number one, putting an eas, a conservation easement on the complete lot.
Is that the main house?
Yes, yes. And I'm saying lot number one, I'm trying to go from memory based on the plan.
It's a plan.
But they are, they're at least interested in pursuing that. We suggested that they have a discussion and they ended up speaking with the Natural, Natural Land Trust.
North American, I lied.
Sorry, yeah, North American Land Trust, my mistake.
North Americans, is that what it is?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm talking about, yeah. We talked with Steve Carter.
Right. And specifically what they're, they were interested in how they might pursue a conservation easement while still maintaining what they would like to do on that particular lot. And so it could be a win-win for everybody because it'd be more acreage perhaps placed into easement.
Did they indicate that they wanted to put a trail in or not?
I don't recall actually getting into that discussion.
No.
Do you?
Because I, I'm sorry.
I don't think they would be adverse.
Well, because I'm, I'm sure that Chris doesn't know that North American Land Trust will not do trail easement, will not hold trail easement, so he probably should know that if he wants to, you know?
Yeah. They were still at the early stage of their planning, so, but they were interested and it seems like from a positive perspective. And it had also been advised that they talked to a tax accountant, tax attorney because of the Act 319 implications and all the various strategies that they, they might have to have, but.
I would like to pick up on Lisa's point. I don't think that that property would be particularly good to have trail easement because there are trails to the, get myself oriented here, to the west.
Cross street, yeah.
To the west.
Right.
And there's, there's large pieces of land out there and they feed up towards the Schmidt area and whatnot. So I think that, that that would be a very important corridor to maintain some sort of trail if we can at all possibly do it.
That's a good point. It would be connecting.
So now what has been messed up with Chris because do they, are they supposed to be going on getting an appraisal at this point?
Well, I think that honestly, they still wanted to look at some of their tax implications and understand what they might be able to do and to digest the information that they received from Steve Carter as to what might be ways to approach the easement. And so they're probably gonna need a week, a couple of weeks of soak time and then figure out where we wanna go from there.
I believe Steve did give him a list of appraisers.
Appraiser, right.
Okay, because the case is gonna be before the planning council for approval and there's some contingencies based on getting an easement.
Right.
So.
Right.
Has he been given a list of land conservancy or land trust?
Yeah, right.
Was Jim talking?
He was giving, giving a list of available land trust and also a list of available appraisers.
There's a large area, I don't know how big it is, Jim, but there's a lot of non-buildable area down between the main house and Old Kennet Road.
Yeah.
You get into all those wetlands down there.
Yeah.
That's the pond that's in the side of there, right?
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
So we were aware of that.
Yeah.
Jim?
Joe?
Joe.
I said, no, you, I said you lift your hand up, yeah.
I'm Joe.
Yeah, oh, Joe, I'm sorry.
Does the township have any plan to do their own appraisal in the case of an easement on this property? A separate independent appraisal for the township?
What I heard?
Or will they plan, just carte blanche, accept the applicant's appraisal?
Well, I thought the way we left it was that if we felt it was necessary, if we questioned the appraisers that they obtained, that then we would obtain a separate one.
And I have to?
But it wasn't a requirement every time.
I have to speak from, and I know I have no authority with this, but from my point of view, when I have to talk to the residents that are wanting to preserve the land, it's very difficult to explain why their property has to have a second appraisal but the next property doesn't. So I wish the supervisors would decide one way or another because I have a, there's a case right now that is, you know, the residents upset that we're not getting a second appraisal for another property when we are for theirs. And it's, it's hard to just say it's because, well, your property's different.
Sort of if you, if one doctor said you needed your gallbladder out, you'd like to get a second opinion.
Right.
Well, I, I made the proposal, which I think that LCAC has had a chance to look at and comment on, and if I, and I have it here, and I suggested that it would be, in my estimation, it would be wise to have a qualified appraiser under contract, just like we have an engineer, just like we have an accountant, whatever. It's, it's not going out and buying the services, the cream puff Cadillac services, but to have somebody there to look at it for us and give us a second opinion. And my expectation would be that that would be a rather inexpensive review and I think it would be helpful to all concerned. I mean, when is it, when is the separate appraisal only if necessary? When, when is the if necessary? It becomes very much a judgment call. And so I'm suggesting that by having somebody like that in place and it just, just passes through, like we have one that does, does, the landscaping, does the same thing. There's a letter when the time comes as to whether this is appropriate. I think that would cut out a lot of the grumbling and the confusion and the concern.
Let's skip it down to the agenda. We're gonna be in the LCAC in a couple of weeks to discuss their proposal. I think that's part of that, so.
Yeah.
So we will, we have to, we can settle that at that time or at least look at it.
Okay.
Bob, there's a, the question, I have a copy of the mission of the LCAC and one of the items in here is their responsibility or their mission to advise the board of supervisors as to the quality and value of land parcels considered for easement or acquisition. Is that a change from the original? I thought originally the supervisors didn't want the LCAC to offer any advice as to value. They weren't involved, they weren't to be involved in the financial aspects of this. But this, I'm delighted that it's in there and I hope it's interpreted that they can.
That hasn't been changed.
No, are you looking at a draft copy?
No.
No, this is the one that came out of the file, the latest one.
And it hasn't changed.
Lisa gave it to me and?
It hasn't changed.
The term value, you're interpreting value bill as a financial valuation?
Yes.
And that's not what we provide. We're providing a, if you would, a qualitative assessment as to whether or not a parcel should be considered for an easement and then the financial valuation is up to the supervisors. Nothing has changed. There, there's discussion that would suggest that perhaps we could, but that's part of the ongoing discussion that would be happening.
We'll look at that when we get to that meeting. I'll do it tonight.
Bob?
To this question about if necessary, you could define that by, most appraisals that we know usually have three comparable parcels or, you know, homes or whatever go by it. And you can say if necessary, if that happens to be weak, maybe because how long ago a property sold, if they're trying to bring in, you might say if, if two of the properties are over a year old, then it might be necessary. Or that you can't even come up with three. They may only be able to come up with two, but we're talking parcel of land, it might be hard to come up with equivalents. But I guess what I'm saying is that you can, you can decide what necessary is upfront and then you wouldn't have a conflict with that. Maybe because you could say, well, in your case, you couldn't come up with a couple of properties, so we had to have a second opinion. But in their case, they've met that criteria. I'm just trying to look out for the fact that sometimes it's pretty obvious that the appraisal is appropriate and why spend township's monies if it's gonna be an argument back and forth. Going, going to Joe's point, if it's a big difference, well, then obviously you wanna have a second opinion on that appraisal. But these guys are art form. I'm having my house appraised every two years, it seems. But these guys are art form, I mean, my house is appraised every two years it seems like because of the property value and, and it's pretty, it's pretty obvious when you get that formal appraisal that they did their job.
I just want to say that, that while I understand that the need for that, of using the word weak and who determines what weak is, it's kinda like, well, when is it, when is it necessary as to, and when is it weak or when is it strong? And who decides whether it's necessary or weak or strong or not necessary? You know, you gotta think back to where you started.
That's right. It's a contradiction they can come up with, but I was trying to give you an example that how far apart...
You have three comps and then what is, what's old and what's new? Is a comp like nine months good or is it a comp like ten months?
That's, that's, that's defined. Yeah.
Well, you guys have, Margaret, you have a question.
Yeah, just a couple things. I'm really happy to hear that the LCAC is getting out to the sites and looking at them because boots on the ground is the only way that, you know, you're gonna look at it. And I'm interested in knowing how, look at land and look at conservation. I'm interested in knowing how John Gatt's role is gonna be integrated in with the LCAC since he's been hired in part to play a role in that. And with his wealth and knowledge, et cetera, he might be appropriate as being someone to help with this process, these considerations of appraisal. And the other thing I, I have to add, sort of in continuation to Bob's discussion and maybe help remove some of the ambiguity, if there is a specific dollar amount as the, if they are asking for the township for more than fifty thousand dollars, boom, second appraisal gets popped in. And that's a real clear way of making a distinction. Because when I was with the Delaware Nature Society and we did a land deal between conservation partners, we had four appraisals and constantly getting them redone and reevaluated, left and right, both really good firms, but everyone's trying to tighten up the number. So as we, you know, find ourselves spending money, getting our budget down, that might be an appropriate line to draw, so that would help to find an exit.
Steve?
Excuse me, let me just ask, we're not gonna answer Margaret's question about John Gatt's?
Oh. I don't know that answer.
I don't think we are and I think maybe that's too far what we're gonna do with the LCAC.
Yeah, what do we need?
Because it's the three, those three things that will have to work together, so...
Okay.
Yeah, it's basically a scout to answer the question of one word.
I just wanted to make sure that the question was left, was not left.
And the reason I bring it forward is, is John has a tremendous amount of experience, not just going out and having cups of coffee and engaging people, but really looking at this process and what's an appropriate process.
That's why we...
He could bring in some good insight. Well, I'm just saying he plays some good insight.
Yeah. Well, hopefully after they all meet, they'll be able to report back on all of this, what they're gonna do, me and you guys and LCAC.
Tom, yeah.
Does that mean that they're about to expand the, the challenge to John Gatt? I mean, right now, the only thing we heard was, quote, scout the township for open space. There's a lot of things that John can get into, working with the different groups, advising them, helping them, whether you're talking about LCAC or the EAC or some of the land trusts.
I don't know what John Gatt's role is, that's what...
I think his role ought to be at least clearly expanded to show categories of what he, he can, where he can help.
Just remember, you better be careful because he's on a contract basis and he's not a full-time employee.
He's not a volunteer.
Right. And so, uh, I'm interested in, in how far a leash does he have, to be honest, or how, how far, much of a leash do we put on?
Yeah. We determine, and we determine that.
We're paying naught thirty thousand. I guess I assume Mr. Gatt's in the eighty, eighty-five dollar an hour range. That's a lot of hours to equalize, so, you know, we need to spend our money wisely, yes. But if we're contemplating spending two, three, four, five hundred thousand dollars on easements, his contribution may be dollar small, however loom large in the entire picture. So it's worth a consideration.
I just wanted to make sure, see, I didn't mean to cut you off, Joe.
I'm finished.
I want to make sure that I understand, Bill, what you're asking. I think I heard you say that it's good that there will be a discussion with the supervisors in LCAC that will talk about that role and particularly will include John Gatt. So that's good. We're all in agreement on that. But I think I'm also hearing you say, I think it's necessary that we should look at John Gatt beyond LCAC and see if he has skills that match up with areas where we have needs to see if he can fit into that. Is that what you're saying? I mean, they're my words, obviously, but is, is that the point you're making?
Yes.
Okay, well, I, I think that would be wise to do. Whether, whether it in fact generates a broader relationship, we will have at least looked into the possibilities and thought about what our needs are. And that's perhaps the area that's important to address, that we look at what our needs are.
Uh, we cannot discuss prices here of the easements. I just wanted to mention that before I ask them the next question. I need to know, you guys received a letter back from Steve Collins regarding the burnt easement, saying that what she wanted to do wouldn't affect her easement value. So I wanted to know if, if you've thought about the burnt easement yet? And if you want to proceed with the burnt easement? And if you do, maybe the three of you could come up with a price, I don't know. One's here, one's there.
Well, the problem that I have with, with what I'm getting asked is that I have questions about the basis. I mean, I, I understand, I understand what the appraisal value was and I understand...
What's he asking?
How he was looking at it with the additions or deletions that we had talked about previously. But I have, I have questions about the, the underlying value, to use P-12's definition.
Such as the forest.
Such as the forest. And so I'm anticipating that when we get into that discussion at a, at a public meeting, that somebody from LCAC will be there to explain the calculations and clarify for me what I'm not seeing.
Okay. So, but I think before we can proceed any further, to even bring it up at a public meeting, we have to give the burnt an offer.
Why?
Because...
Isn't that contingent upon what we decide on price? And don't we have to do that in a public forum discussion?
Well, from what I understand, you guys have to come up with it first and then you can discuss it publicly because if she doesn't accept your offer, then it won't even be on the table.
Makes it difficult to do.
I, yeah.
And without input from LCAC...
Well, then maybe, when are you meeting with the board?
Too late.
Yeah, I, I don't know, the, John was trying to set the time up.
Yeah, he's in Arizona.
Yeah, John Larmour was trying to set the time up.
Well, maybe I can just tell them, once you guys meet, then you'll get back, we'll get back to them. And can that be on your list of things to discuss? The burnt easement?
Well, I'm certainly in favor of the burnt easement. I just need some, some guidance to clarify my thinking as to value.
Okay, well, then, that's what I'll tell them. The other easement is the Conley easement. I, uh, the Conley easement, you guys had decided you would get a second appraisal on it.
We killed it.
Yeah, well, then, because Conley came back and told you what number he would not, and he wouldn't accept anything less than that number. So right now, Brian Conley wants to know if you guys want to pursue the easement at all.
I do, I think that's a very important easement there.
And I know Brian Conley's trying to sell the property and I think the buyer's interested in an easement as well. So I'm not quite sure how to tell Conley you would like to proceed. I don't know if you guys wanna meet with him, you don't wanna meet with him, what you would like to do.
He seems pretty firm or adamant of what he wants to receive for it.
He is.
And that's not acceptable, is what I can tell.
Well, that shows a, a, a open mind for discussing, finding of middle ground. But it, it's, he's collapsing the telescope on me because we're of the opinion that we need that appraisal in, so we can, if the appraisal comes in at his numbers, then that's a different thing. If it comes in a lower number, then that also is an important definition for us. So don't we need to see that before we're in a position to have that discussion?
He said he wasn't, he's not gonna wait for it.
Well, yeah.
That's his choice.
Yeah, that's, that's why I said we're not gonna do anything with him.
What I wanted to know is if I went back to him and said, the supervisors require a second appraisal and they don't know what the number would be right now because they haven't seen, you know, they want to see the second appraisal. So if you're willing to wait until they get the second appraisal and you're willing to work with them, then we'll go ahead with that, but if not, then...
Okay, we give them assurances that we've ordered the second appraisal? We expect it within a week, within ten days, within five months? We'll call you in two years? Give them some line.
What I would do is I would call whoever we're gonna get to do the appraisal and ask them how long and tell them this is how long they said it would take. And, you know...
We have an order to check?
No, because remember, he came back and said, I'm not waiting for it.
He took away for us to do it.
So that, so then we didn't do anything with it because he said, I'm not waiting. And then he got back and he said, but I, I wanna know if they're willing to meet that price. And I said, not without a second appraisal, they won't do it, so.
Can we find out how long it'll take?
Yeah.
And then we can tell him that it's gonna be, I mean, we're talking about a period here of six weeks at the most for us to get an appraisal in and have discussed it?
And he shouldn't know.
Yeah.
He said, he said no is six weeks?
Yes.
Well, he, he said no to the...
He said, well, he's not gonna wait five or six weeks.
Yeah, yeah, he wanted to know for a minute. But I know that the person looking to buy the property would like to ease it as well, so even if they go, if, even if they go ahead and sell the property, then that person would like to have it eased as well. So it makes sense to get the appraisal because one way or the other...
Well, it does certainly take a pressure off on them. It'd be real, it should be a, a second shoe to drop.
Should we ask George? We don't put you on the spot, George.
I don't wanna do that in.
We don't have a real part.
Can I throw out a thought here? Because I hear this easement evaluation coming up several times. And I know that the open lands that are remaining in the township have been mapped, but we have never prioritized. And it just might be, for an internal use, a great opportunity to work with the LCAC, with John Gatt, one of his great skills, and help coming up with a priority of lands that would be of the first choice. Those first priorities, they're the ones that are gonna get the highest value in terms of the monies based on their appraisal that the township is willing to give. And this helps with situations when you get down the road. So let's say Conley, his property was off in the side and wasn't in a valued area. You can go, that's fine, I understand you want it, but we don't hold it as important as this parcel, this parcel, this parcel, and this parcel. So our process is saying, we're only gonna give you fifty, sixty percent. It just helps take some of this negotiation piece out of the last minute dealing. It gives you a stronger position, so...
And you brought that up before and the supervisor said they would have the LCAC discuss that because it does make a good point because I don't understand how you can just say, well, we'll offer forty percent for this one and a hundred for this one and twenty for this one. I think there should be, like you said, a map, seeing which property should have this value or some sort of formula, not just...
Well, that helps with, and one of, one of the reasons why the LCAC is very interested in, in meeting with the supervisors is that the township actually has a valuation model that, that really needs to be exercised. Perhaps the word would be dusted off and used. But I think some of the, some of the answers to the questions that you have would be explained because that model does try to take into consideration prioritization and a number of other factors regarding a parcel.
What is the model name you called that?
Uh, it's the, the Land Preservation Value Calculator, I believe was the...
Is that, is that the sheet?
It's actually, the sheet is an input to a, an Excel worksheet, which Alan Falcough had put together and, and with the, also working with the Brannoyan Conservancy and others. So, you know, it just needs to be dusted off and, and, you know, would probably go a long way to helping some of these types of discussions.
John?
John?
You wanna talk about the bike way?
Yeah, please.
Uh, I had one question before we moved on, if I may.
Well, we promised him that he got a presentation yesterday.
I won't be long. How many lots are we potentially talking about here on this, the Conley, is it Conley?
Well, Conley says it's seven lots. That's why the supervisors would like an appraisal because they don't know that it's seven lots.
Right. All right, thank you.
Joe?
I just wanted to bring the board up to date on the bike way project. We're at another key point in the whole process for everybody else. We got a grant in two thousand and six. We've been active on it ever since, so it takes time to get these things done. The grant was for nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We're at a point now where we've done all the planning, public involvement, so forth, and we're just completing the final design to meet the PENDOT design criteria. Part of that is creation of a PS and E, Plan, Specification and Estimate Package, that our contractor, Urban Engineers, has completed. PENDOT is in the final review of that. So next summer, we will face the actual construction of the widening of shoulders on Fifty-two from Harrington down to the Pembroke Line. To go along with that construction, the township is undertaking the management over and oversight of the inspection and that construction work. That piece is about ninety-six thousand dollars. And we are at a point where we're gonna go after bid for that. Today, we got Urban Engineers to upload to an electronic system called PEN Bid all their drawings and specifications, it's like a hundred and twenty-five. So all that's sitting there, ready to go. We have a public announcement ready, soliciting for the bid and the RFQ, which gives you the detail of what people are bidding on. So I'm about ready to turn that on, probably tomorrow, unless there's some caution or objection or counsel that you guys have. This last chunk of money that we have left now, which is seven hundred and forty thousand dollars, requires no match, it's all federal money that comes to the township for the construction and for the inspection. There'll be no money involved in that. I think Tom and I put a few thousand dollars in in case we need township engineering services, just, you know, ask some questions and find out what's, what all these contractors and so forth are doing. But that's minimal money and that's only as needed, so we may not spend anything. So that's, that's where we stand and we're, we're ready to go on that. This PEN Bid is an electronic-based bidding package that was developed by Montgomery County, working with a private firm that handled, I think, fifty thousand bid solicitations. And the beauty of it, it's all electronic, it's very accessible to the public, so... And it automates everything to... it automates everything to greatly reduce the burden on the township in this case.
Put the plans in order, including on that, when they show it?
Yeah. John and Tom and I had a lesson on it, and I would definitely use it for sewer extensions, it's a great tool. However, I did find out that we're not allowed to use it for our roadwork that we spend state fund money on. The auditor general will not let you use it for that, because the winning bidder has to pay a percentage. That's how they fund the PennBid. So whoever, if ten people bid on a project, whoever wins has to, is it one percent?
One quarter of one percent.
One quarter of one percent of whatever the bid, the winning bid is, so we can't use that for state-funded projects.
What about the co-op and all these?
That's what I'm talking about, we can't use it for that.
Yeah, use it at all.
But we can use it for our sewer projects.
So, that's all, I just wanted to let you know, that's what we're about to do.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, a question that's just following up with John. John, are there any crossings of Fifty-two of that bike trail, or is it just running down one side of the shoulder? So is it on the west side, east side, both sides?
Technically, Margot, it is not a bike trail, it's a shoulder improvement project.
Fair enough, but is there any crossing?
The shoulder's not across the road, no.
Right, but is there any point that is designated as a crossing point for where the bicycles are to move?
Yeah, at Route One.
Okay, so there, there is a crossing.
That's not part of this project, no.
Okay, and then, is, in the process of the shoulder improvement, is the shoulder being designated to the township?
Designated.
Is it designated as a shoulder for public use?
You like, you like bike道 (inaudible).
It's a, I believe it's a share the road approach, technically, it's not a bike path.
Right, right, but with, within Pennsylvania, in the PennDOT code, you can designate a shoulder for public access, which can be either walking or biking, and I'm just wondering if that had been part of the process.
It's not designated. I, I don't believe it's dedicated, it's a shoulder.
Okay, so, yeah, you would just, you would have known if it was a specific process of designation.
I haven't, I haven't heard of that.
Are there any lines on the road, such as they have down in Central, that would indicate the just as a, bicycles on arrows and...
My understanding is there will be a white stripe, maybe wider than the traditional white stripe, and rumble strips.
And does that stay on one side the whole way up?
No, it's on both sides.
Both sides. It's on both sides, so it'll be going both ways.
It's a phase for traffic, if you're walking, then there will be traffic if you're biking.
And there'd be no place for the roads, where he just goes to one side or the other?
Well, in Hammond, there's crosswalks, and the whole traffic signal, that's the only place. One last thing, this bid will be open until the twenty-fourth of October, so if anyone wants a bid, you can go and bid. Further, once we get the bids in, the bids are essentially a list of qualifications of a committee of Tom, Nao, myself, Phil McLaughlin, and Roger Rogers. We will evaluate the qualifications and choose a firm or a few firms to further pursue the whole question of, we are.
I just wanted to ask Margot and John real quick, are you, is the Drakeway Valley Team finally, and the Brandywine Valley Team finally meeting soon?
From what I've heard, there hasn't been a date set, we hope it's to do it in October, I think it was a matter of the Brandywine Valley Team finally, new consultant getting settled in before they made that commitment on doing. That's from my understanding.
Thank you for coming. We're adjourned.